Good morning. The public hearing conducted by the Land Committee on Land, Environment, Housing and Agriculture, Parks and Infrastructure is called order and the time is 8:30 a.m. Today's date is Friday, June 27, 2025. Notice of this hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on June 20, 2025, with the second notice provided on June 25, 2025. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website and the government of Guam Public Notice Portal. This morning, the committee will hold the second public hearing to hear testimony on Bill Number 32-38COR, introduced by the Committee on Rules by request of Imega Hagen-Guahan, the governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam, an act to authorize the transfer of Lot 5173-1-R2NEW-R7 and Lot 5173-1-R2NEW-6 in the municipality of Timuning from the Tomorrowland Trust Commission to the heirs of Francisco D. Perez, the original landowner. The first public hearing on this bill was held on March 13, 2025. Before we begin, I would like to go over the general rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name for the record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal interference as to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal from the hearing any member of the La Satura in Guam who fails to observe the property coram pursuant to 38 Guam Legislature Standing Rules. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in the removal of any individual from the hearing as well. We'll now proceed with the hearing on testimony on Bill Number 32-38COR. I'd like to call first to the table Mr. Joseph Arturo Cameron, the CLTC Commissioner, Thank you, Senator, for your giving oral testimony. We'll just take a one-minute recess as we get everyone to come in so we can just get I think we're back. I'd like to also call Mr. John Perez. If you can sit, please sit down. Yeah. So like with any other public hearing, we always recognize the rose before the thorn. But again, welcome to the Guam Legislature's public hearing on Bill Number 32-38COR. This is, again, the second public hearing on this bill. First, I would like to recognize my former colleague Senator Tony Lamarena and also Senator Mary Comacho Torres. I'd like to recognize my colleagues here at the podium, at the dais, Senator Chris Duñez, my vice chair, and also Senator Teresa Terlalhi. Thank you both for joining me today. Mr. McCullough, we'll go ahead and start with you on your testimony this morning on Bill Number 32-38COR. Just press the center button there. Thank you.
Good morning.
And state your name for the record.
My name is Catherine Flores McCullough. I'm of the Retidian and Tidzen families. I have joined so many organizations already on land return. Anyway, I'm writing to express my strong support of Bill Number 32-38, An Act to Authorize the Transfer of Lot 5173-1-R2NEW-R7 and Lot 5173-1-R2NEW-6 in the municipality of Timuning and from the Tomorrowland Trust Commission to the heirs of Francisco D. Perez, the original landowner, and would like to add that I will continue to support all future land return. Remembering the protests in the 1990s as we gathered around the roundabout in Oka, Tidzen, Nimitz Hill, Harmon Cliff Line, and Retidian with fellow landowners and many organizations all crying for the return of our lands, the creation of the Guam Tomorrowland Trust and the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Because of the commitment of the governors and the legislature then and thankfully up to the present day, commitment to return property is ongoing. I feel that many of our properties and the coffers of Guam Ancestral Lands Commission and Tomorrowland Trust and local and federal government must be returned to their original landowners. Once returned, we can exercise our property rights to have the best and highest use of our lands. I also feel that a mechanism should be in place to buy distressed properties, maybe through Guam Ancestral Lands Commission and Guam Tomorrowland Trust, to keep our Tomorrowland in our hands. I ask that you continue to work with the governor and process in place to ensure our people will see their lands returned. I commend you all for your hard work and commitment to working with the people of Guam, most especially in this effort. Sincerely.
Thank you for your testimony this morning. We'll go ahead and go with Senator Tony Lamarena for your testimony. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Senators. My name is Tony Lamarena. I'd like to acknowledge the chairman of the committee, Senator Ada, Senator Duñez, and Senator Terlalhi. I'm here to testify primarily, many years ago when I was in the legislature, in the 25th Guam Legislature, I introduced the bill, 25179, which would have leased the Oka Point properties because it is under the inventory of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. As you all are aware, it is probably the most prime commercial property under the inventory of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. At the time I introduced the bill was to lease that property for 50 years with escalation costs or escalations and so forth, but allow GIDA to negotiate the lease and also to sell that lease in the bond market. At the time, back in 1998, when I introduced the bill, and it actually passed into law, it's still an existing law. At the time, the lease value was about $1 million a year, even more. So therefore, if you leased it for $1 million a year, 50 million, you could sell that in the bond market for about $35 million. Infrastructure to put water, power, sewer, and sidewalks in the Tomorrowland Trust lands was about $15,000 at the time. Over 2,300 lots would have had full infrastructure on their properties. Obviously, the legislature, after I left, in their wisdom, changed all government of Guam leases to five years. So therefore, there was no interest in leasing the Oka Point properties. Again, I introduced the legislation in mind of how we can best help recipients of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. Many leaseholders today are holding on to a piece of paper who are not able even to move into their property due to the lack of infrastructure. And so, you know, that was the reasoning behind my piece of legislation, actually is currently a law. Now, in this bill, the intent is to correct the wrong in the government. Many years ago, when I was serving with the late Senator Angel Santos, he and I had a very deep conversation. And, you know, the big thing at the time was the military taking land. But he also told me, one of the biggest thieves of land is the government of Guam. A lot of land that was taken from private landowners for the purpose of the public use, to be used for streets, for government facilities such as schools, fire departments, and so forth, land was taken from original landowners with no compensation, no compensation. Tidzen landowners, Tidzen landowners had been waiting. All the surrounding areas, and again, the wisdom of the legislature gave land outside of the airport properties back to the original landowners, but those individuals whose land lays in the airport property have not gotten compensated. I'm here because I'm here for equity for all property owners. If we're going to do this piece of legislation, then a commission has to be established. If the governor's intent is to right a wrong, if it's the legislature's intent to right a wrong, then we need to right the wrong completely. A commission needs to be established, identify all those landowners who have yet to receive any form of compensation. Land that was used for public benefit, like I said, schools, roadways, fire departments, or whatever, whatever public use that were these heirs, because obviously the original landowners have since passed, but their heirs need to also be compensated for the taking of their lands. And that's why I'm here. I'm here to voice my concern that we're only doing one, one piece of property. That's why I'm saying this bill should be amended. If the intent of the governor and this body, this legislature, is to really bring justice to all the landowners, then this bill needs to be amended to initiate a commission that will identify all those properties and those heirs who have not yet been compensated, and there needs to be something done. We did it with war claims, right? We did it with war claims. We can do it with this. So don't stop here just to give back to the Perez family, because there are a lot of other landowners still waiting, who have actually been waiting longer, and that's where we need to work. Because if you're just going to pass this without including everybody else, you're doing an injustice to everybody else. So do the right thing. Start a commission, implement a commission through this legislation, and identify those property owners and their heirs, and let's do the right thing, if that's the intent. If that's the intent of the governor in introducing this bill, then let's do the right thing.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Greta, will you be providing testimony as well? I have you here as oral testimony. You can please have a seat up here. Mr. Cameron, you can... Mr. Cameron, you can go ahead and provide your testimony. Thank you.
Buenos dias, saludos, guaos, y Joseph Arturo Cameron. Matatatzungozi Komision Inangokun Tanu Tamoru, also known as the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. I would like to read a letter to you that was signed by the chairwoman of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission, Arlene P. Bernalio. Dear Vice Speaker Ada, this is in reference to testimony on Bill 3238 Committee on Rules. The current Tomorrowland Trust Commission Board of Commissioners has not yet discussed Bill 3238 Committee on Rules. However, this bill will be included on the agenda for the board's meeting scheduled for July 17, 2025. Once a decision is made, a formal testimony will be submitted. Sinceramente, Arlene P. Bernalio, dated June 25, 2025. Zahu na pa be'u no'i testigo, ahi tiput para'u mana abansamo' na patpul mata'laika. Sa kaiha man mitingam gi komision. Lo guaha un papit weni importanti ni debi na todos i mane'ega ki television, zan todi i senador umali'i esti. Sa esti na papit propio, kumre quentus gi minagahet. Sinceramente, gi nin i ma'posnesia na effectus pur esti. I have in front of me a document, an instrument document from the governor of Guam under the Department of Land Management. That document is 544237, and it was dated April 1996, the date 16. And this was signed off. Under the Territory of Guam Department of Land Management, Recordation Department of Land Management, Claim of Interest. This instrument is made on this 16th day of April of 1996 by Frank D. Perez, whose mailing address is PO Box F, Agania, Guam 96910. The recitals. Whereas former governor of Guam Carlton Skinner was appointed in August of 1949 by President Truman as the first civilian governor of Guam. Whereas former governor of Guam Carlton Skinner and other government of Guam representatives immediately set out to convert the naval government to a civilian government. Whereas, immediately after the passage of the Organic Act of 1950, Governor Skinner quickly recognized that Guam had a serious problem of providing civilian medical care and hospital services for the civilian population and sought real property for the specific purpose of developing a hospital. Whereas Governor Skinner and other government of Guam representatives identified Lot Number 5173-1, place of Oka Point, municipality of Dededo, as property specifically conducive for the use of a hospital development and began negotiations with the registered owner to acquire the property for development of a hospital facility. Whereas, the registered owner of Lot Number 5173-1, place of Oka Point, municipality of Dededo, commonly referred to as the old Guam Memorial Hospital property, containing an area of plus or minus 46,953.5 acres. Number two, supportive claim. This claim of interest is supported by true copy of July 19, 1989. A sworn affidavit of Governor Carlton Skinner, comma, a true copy of which attached hereto as quote-unquote Exhibit A, and incorporated herein by reference, comma, together with various equitable and legal principles, comma, including rights of future interest in real property and abandonment of the property for the specific use of a facility, hospital facility. Number three. This claim of interest shall be binding upon the heirs and administrators of the individuals referenced above. Signed, Frank D. Perez and Notary Public Rachel M. Ugon, dated on the 16th of April 1996. I'm sorry, Senators, do you have a copy of this? Okay, thank you. Recorded as instrument number 544237, the State of California, City and County of San Francisco, affidavit. I Carlton Skinner, being first duly sworn, depose and say, I was appointed in 1949 by President Truman as the first civilian governor of Guam. At that time, Guam was administered by the Naval Department, and I was responsible for the naval government of Guam. I took the oath of office in Agania in September of 1949 and immediately set about converting the naval government to a civilian government. With the passage of Congress and of the Organic Act of 1950, the island became a territory of the United States. New paragraph. I quickly realized that Guam had a serious problem of providing civilian medical care and hospital services for the civilian population, comma. Then about 35,000 persons, the naval government after World War II had created an entity called Guam Memorial Hospital. In reality, this barely existed. It was a group of temporary butler buildings and quonset huts contiguous to and administered as part of the naval hospital. These temporary buildings, rusting, leaking, and with no air conditioning, were only hospital wards. The essential facilities were all part of the naval government. The operating rooms, pharmacy, laundry, morgue, power plant, kitchens, mess hall, and patient feeding were all part of the naval hospital, period. New paragraph. The Navy had plans for building a new naval hospital in its present location overlooking Agania Bay and intended to tear down the temporary, dilapidated buildings in use. Page two. I considered asking to have these transferred to the civilian government, comma, but did not for two reasons. The appalling state of repair and the totally uneconomic prospect of making these buildings into a viable hospital. New paragraph. While in Washington in November or December of 1949, seeking typhoon relief after a devastating typhoon, I called on the chief of the Navy's Bureau of Medicine and Surgery and proposed the joint government of Guam Navy use of the naval, the new naval hospital then getting ready to be constructed. I offered to pay for all hospital services to the civilian population or, in the alternative, to employ doctors and nurses and others necessary to carry our share of the joint hospital service. The admiral said that would be impossible. He could not permit civilian government employees to work in a naval hospital, and he was unwilling to arrange for joint use, comma, reimbursed by the governor of Guam. In frustration, I asked if we could employ cleaners and drivers, and he answered, quote-unquote, "Absolutely not." New paragraph. About this time, comma, the Navy in Guam built a chain-link wire fence between the temporary naval hospital buildings and the buildings used as wards for the civilian population and called euphemistically Guam Memorial Hospital. It became clear to me and my colleagues in the new civilian government that we would have to build our own hospital. New paragraph. In order to include this in the budget, I needed a study of best location, comma, optimum use, comma, facilities needed, comma, etc. We had no money for such a study in the budget, which interior had prepared before I was even appointed. To solve this problem, we built a temporary cockpit on Paseo de Susana and held, page three, week-long, 10-hour-a-day cockfights with the government taking a cut on all debts. This provided us with $25,000, which we used to hire a Honolulu architect who had designed several hospitals in Hawaii, including Queens and St. Francis. The architect did a workman-like job of determining facilities needed and designing them. New paragraph. One of the most critical elements was the location. It had to be accessible from then major centers of population with reasonable access for roads and utilities. A location in order was considered along with several others, however, since the Navy Hospital was to be located in a preferred site overlooking the ocean, we concluded that it would be wrong to bury the civilian hospital in the interior. The civilian patients were also entitled to an attractive location with beautiful views, cool In order to include this in the budget, I needed a study of best location, comma, optimum use, comma, facilities needed, comma, etc. We had no money for such a study in the budget, which interior had prepared before I was even appointed. To solve this problem, we built a temporary cockpit on Baseo de Susana and held, page three, week long, ten hour a day cockfights with the government taking a cut on all bets. This provided us with twenty five thousand dollars, which we used to hire a Honolulu architect who had designed several hospitals in Hawaii, including Queens and Saint Francis. The architect did a workman like job of determining facilities needed and designing them. New paragraph. One of the most critical elements was the location. It had to be accessible from then major centers of population with reasonable access for roads and utilities. A location in order was considered along with several others, however, since the Navy hospital was to be located in a preferred site overlooking the ocean, we concluded that it would be wrong to bury the civilian hospital in the interior. The civilian patients were also entitled to an attractive location with beautiful views, cooling trade winds, etc. I asked Manuel Guerrero, then the Assistant Director of Land Management, to find such a site. He came up with the location of Sat Poon Point, as we know it today as Oka Point. I asked him to negotiate for it with the landowner, who turned out to be Frank Perez. New paragraph. At about this time, the U.S. Army was winding down its activities in Guam and on Saipan and Tinian. Its commanding officer, Brigadier General Danforth, advised me that he would be leaving about two million dollars worth of construction equipment in Saipan and in Tinian and asked if the Governor of Guam could use it. We happily accepted this offer of transfer of surplus construction equipment, which the Army did not want to ship anywhere else. We felt we could use it in the in construction of the site. Page four. For the new hospital as well as in many other construction work projects. Manuel Guerrero was well aware of this bonanza of surplus equipment. I recall that in advising me of the results of his negotiation with Frank Perez for the hospital land, he was proud of getting it for a lower price because the government could trade or pay with construction equipment. I repeat. He was proud of getting it for a lower price because the government could trade or pay with construction equipment. I do not recall the exact amount of equipment, but do recall that equipment transferred to Mr. Perez was part of the deal. I repeat. I do not recall the exact amount of equipment, but do recall the equipment transferred to Mr. Perez was part of the deal, period. New paragraph. About two months after the Army executed the government, the documents transferring the equipment to the Government of Guam, about two months after the Army executed the documents transferring the equipment to the Government of Guam, the Navy learned about it. Probably from the shipping company or barge owner we had contracted with to bring the equipment to Guam. The Navy then exercised its superior rights under the surplus property regulations to take over the construction equipment. Transfers between units of Department of Defense had a higher priority than other departments of the federal, state, or territorial governments, and so we lost it. In the meantime, however, the land had been bought from Mr. Perez with a valid contract. The Government of Guam had no other construction equipment it could transfer to him. Consequently, no transfer of construction equipment was ever made to Mr. Perez. Consequently, no transfer of construction equipment was ever made to Mr. Perez. New paragraph. The commitment to transfer the equipment would have been made by Director of Public Works Holbrook and Manuel Guerrero with my approval. Subscribe this nineteenth day of July nineteen eighty nine at San Francisco, California. Subscribe and sworn to before me the nineteenth day of July. Carlton Skinner, former Governor of Guam. I would like to place this for record. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Mr. Garrido, would you like to prevent, present your testimony?
Before I give my oral testimony, I would like to yield to this gentleman to my right. He's a direct descendant of Francisco D. Perez.
He'll be speaking after you.
Yes.
No, after you. You can go ahead and, you can go ahead and proceed.
My name is Earl Garrido. I come here on my own personal capacity to testify in favor of Bill thirty two dash thirty eight. For the record, I am related to Frank D. Perez. He's my mother's first cousin, so his heirs are my second cousin. Okay. Now, I do, like I said, I do stand in favor of this land transfer back to the original owners, which is the Perez family prior to the government taking control of it. Okay, the terms and condition as specified earlier by the previous speaker was terms and conditions, okay? The terms and conditions were not fully met in the original transaction. As he had pointed out, there was construction equipment that was supposed to transfer hands from from the federal government to the Perez family as part of the land swap or exchange. The original intent of the transfer was to provide a space or property for Guam to build its own hospital. That was achieved initially, but through time and through decades, it fell apart and it ended up being abandoned. If you, if you check all the evidence that was presented by Mr. Cameron, there are revisionary rights that were not properly fulfilled, and that, of course, is the construction equipment. They were given a total, a token amount of, I believe, maybe fifty thousand dollars back then, but that was just part of the terms and condition. Laws regarding property transfer, land use, and government obligation, they vary widely. In this case, we're leaving it up to your esteemed body to make that determination where the transfer can be executed. And since you are the lawmakers, you are the people that can make it happen. You are the movers, the ground shakers. The previous speaker, Mr. Cameron, had offered evidence of noncompliance through written testimony from the former Governor of Guam, I believe he said Governor Skinner, that not all the terms of the land transfer were fulfilled. If it's determined that the government's in breach of the property transfer terms, the legal remedies might include negotiation, attempting to negotiate a return of the property, which I am in support of. Hopefully, we do not have to go into litigation. Also, community engagement, which is reclaiming the property is challenging. Consider connecting the community organizations or residents who share an interest. And in conclusion, recovering the property given to the government can be complicated and often requires navigating legal bureaucracies and community dynamics. Each case will depend significantly on the specific document, local laws, and circumstances surrounding the original transfer and current status of the property. Working with legal counsel, engaging with local government can be critical steps in addressing the issues effectively. And it's common knowledge that to build a fire, you must have a spark. And although this does not address all the the properties that should require your attention to remediate and rectify, like I said, you start a fire with a single spark and that becomes your fire. So let's not, let's not, please, let's not bog this down by having to incorporate everything all in one time in a big giant bill or resolution. I think we should handle it one step at a time, and this is a good beginning step. I thank you, and let me readdress myself because I, I forgot to do it. Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker, Senator Doña, Senator Delai, and Senator Barrett for being so attentive to the cause. Situs Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Garrido. Also like to recognize my colleague Senator Chris Barnett for being here today. Thank you. And also the presence of the Chairwoman of the Chamaraline Trust Commission, Ms. Bordalio. Thank you for being here, ma'am, and I do understand that you will not be offering any oral testimony that you're just here for. Thank you. Mr. Perez, we'll go ahead and continue with your testimony, sir.
Good morning. I am John D. Perez, the, one of the sons of the late Francisco D. Perez. And I am here to testify in favor of Bill thirty two thirty eight C O R as a representative of the family of Francisco D. Perez. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Vice Speaker, members of the legislature, distinguished guests, and the people of Guam. Thank you for the opportunity to further expand our views on Bill thirty two thirty eight C O R. In addition to my written testimony submitted in March twelfth, twenty twenty five, the family of the late Francisco D. Perez consider it necessary to offer historic occurrences relative to the sale of Hospital Point to the Government of Guam in brief and in a chronological order. On May eighth, nineteen twenty nine, the Naval Government of Guam Department of Records and Accounts issued Certificate of Title number five three zero dash one two four six four and Guarantee Claim number three two three six to certify that Atkins Crowell Guam is the owner of an estate in fee simple of Lot five one seven three and according to Executive Order number fifty three. On June seventh, nineteen thirty three, Atkins Crowell sold Lot five one seven three to Francisco D. Perez. The transaction was signed by both the Examiner of Title and the Registrar of Land on July five, nineteen thirty three. The sale transaction was documented as, quote, sale, transfer, alien, and convert on to Francisco D. Perez under document number zero one two seven nine seven. Certificate of Title number five seven zero was issued in the name of Francisco D. Perez on July fifth, nineteen thirty three. On September of nineteen fifty one, Francisco D. Perez created the company Frank D. Perez and Brothers. During this period, Mr. Perez began the initial stages of planning and developing Guam's first subdivision, Perrisville, on Lot five one seven three. On October twenty nine, nineteen fifty one, a deed transferred a part or portion of Lot number five one seven three from Francisco D. Perez to the Government of Guam. This deed was recorded October thirty one, nineteen fifty one, under document number two three eight one seven to include map number L M dash eight. The sale price was in the amount of fifty one thousand nine one four point nine nine dollars for one hundred seventy three thousand zero five nine square meters plus or less. Approximately forty two point seven six acres of land area at thirty cents per square meter plus construction equipment that was to be provided by the Government of Guam to Francisco D. Perez. Upon learning of the pending transaction of construction equipment executed by the Army, the Navy then exercised its superior rights under surplus property regulations to take over the construction equipment. The construction equipment was never received by Francisco D. Perez. It was the intent of Francisco D. Perez to use the construction equipment to facilitate the development of Perrisville with this newly formed company Frank D. Perez and Brothers. On October twenty nine through thirty one, nineteen fifty one, in addition to the forty two point seven six plus or minus acres of land, thirty six acres, was gifted by Francisco D. Perez as easement for the road to the hospital. This was approximately fourteen thousand seven six five square meters of land area, a road width of one hundred feet, as the right of way for the hospital and the people of Guam. On July nineteen, nineteen eighty nine, Governor Carlton Skinner provided an affidavit dated July nineteen nineteen eighty nine in support of the land transaction to include construction equipment to be exchanged with Francisco D. Perez in consideration of a greatly reduced purchase price for the land, approximately forty two point seven six acres. On April sixteen, nineteen ninety six, Francisco D. Perez filed a claim of interest on Oka Point. The Carlton Skinner affidavit was attached as exhibit A to the filed claim of interest. On May twenty one, nineteen ninety six, Senator Angel L. G. Santos introduced Bill six two five dash twenty three. One of the intents of the bill was to return one third of the Oka Point property, approximately sixteen point zero eight acres, to Frank D. Perez. This bill was co-sponsored by Senators Ted Nelson, Mark Chorfres, Chosan Augustine, Antonio Onpinkle, and John Uggan. The legislature voted to pass Bill six two five dash twenty three. It was then forwarded to the executive branch and was subsequently vetoed by Acting Governor Madeline Bordalio. In referencing the bill, page section, section five A, page seven, section five A, one specifically delineates the location of the portion of Oka Point to be granted to Frank D. Perez. One third of the property, sixteen point zero acres, located on the westernmost portion of the property extending eastward. Also referencing sixty six two five dash twenty three, page eight, section five E, passing of title. This section states that title to the lot shall vest in fee simple absolute in Perez, in currency Frank D. Perez. Some excerpts of the bill include, page two to three, he further indicated his willingness to be patient when circumstances intervene which delayed payment. Seven. On the strength of its representation in its agreement with Mr. Perez, the Government of Guam took possession of the property and established the Guam Memorial Hospital on said property. However, the Government of Guam only paid a small percentage of decreed upon price for the property. To this date, although Mr. Perez and his family have worked diligently with the Government of Guam and its various agencies and bodies, compensation for the acquisition of the property was not paid as promised. Eight. Notwithstanding the delay in payment, Mr. and Mrs. Perez, believing in the good faith of the Government of Guam, continued to pursue their dream that the people of Guam receive benefit from the property as a medical facility. After the transfer of the Hospital Point property to the Government of Guam, Mr. Perez realized that existing access route to the hospital might not always be adequate to meet as yet unforeseeable needs. Acting on this foresight, Mr. Perez donated in perpetuity an additional one hundred foot wide road easement across his property to ensure that access to the hospital would not be difficult when the need arose. Despite the failure of Government of Guam to provide the compensation due to them under agreement with them, Mr. and Mrs. Perez continued to and continues to provide other benefits to the people of Guam by donations and otherwise. Ten. This abandonment frustrated the intent of the agreement, which induced Mr. and Mrs. Perez to transfer the property at substantially less than its fair market value to exercise forbearance in pressing for the need upon compensation. Page four. The government, section twelve, the failure of the Government of Guam to complete payment to Mr. and Mrs. Perez for the acquisition of Hospital Point property and the abandonment of the old Guam Memorial Hospital and the cessation of the use of the property for its intended purpose have given rise to equitable and legal claims and Mr. and Mrs. Perez and their heirs, assigns successors, and potential clouds on the title to the property. Thirteen B, legislative policy and intent. And if I may, I would like to just mention a couple of points because the entirety of points because the entirety of that section is worth noting. 1. Where land is purchased for the specific use by government and government fails or ceases to use the property acquired for the purpose for which it was acquired, such land should be returned to those who owned it. Section 2. Government of Guam has taken the position that lands acquired from private persons should be ultimately returned upon the failure to so use the property or the cessation of its use for the specific purposes. 3. Government has the obligation to rectify past injustices resulting from its conduct and not to take refuse in legal technicalities. On June 12, 1996, Pacific Daily News reported the passing of Bill 625-23. On July 24, 1996, in further support of the land purchase terms, Governor Carlton Skinner addressed the managing editor of Pacific Daily News, Mr. Joseph Navatney, in the letter dated July 24, 1996. In this letter to Mr. Joseph Navatney, Governor Carlton Skinner reiterated two salient points related to the Guam Memorial Hospital transaction. These two points were, in verbatim from the letter, quote, "First, GovGuam prevailed on Frank Perez to sell the land specifically for a hospital site. Second, the surplus construction equipment of value greatly in excess of the cash payment was an integral part of the purchase price, which could not be delivered because of the Navy preemption," close quote. On July 24, 2015, Frank D. Perez Jr. filed an Oka Point claim of interest. On July 9, 2020, Gregory D. Perez filed an Oka Point claim of interest. On January 17, 2025, the Committee of Rules by request of Magahagan Guahan, the Governor of Guam, Lou Leon Guerrero, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam, introduced Bill 3238. A public hearing was then scheduled and conducted on March 13, 2025. We, the family of the late Francisco D. Perez, continue to believe that the original land transaction without the transfer of construction equipment to Frank D. Perez is a land transaction unfulfilled and appreciate Bill number 3238-COR efforts to remedy the transaction to fulfillment. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez, for your testimony. We'll call Mr. David Herrera, who will be providing testimony. Are you going to oral or just submitting your written? Mr. Perez, you can just remain seated. And then we'll also call Senator Torres. You follow after Mr. Herrera, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Herrera, with your testimony. You can come forward. Senator?
Buenos dias, and hafa de Vice Speaker Tony Adan, and manana sítuus para to do man honorably na senador, dan senadora ni preesina komitean tonu. Ina onusi David ba bauta Herrera, gi hagadzu dan membruzu gi nasón samoru, disti antis gi tempunguantis. Dan gi nin membruzu gi nin komishonin angokun tonu, wini gi dosmit 22 dan i dosmit 25 na sakang gi aneru. By who finu englis pa gu put para uma comprendino ni famalu na membru, ni man eekungu pa gu na betnis, donkulu na sítuus maasi. Good morning, honorable Vice Chairman Tony Adan, to all the honorable senators who are present today. I am truly humbled by the opportunity to exercise our freedom of speech, but more importantly, to emphasize the need to protect the resources and assets of the Chamorlan Trust Commission. I am here before the body today as one of the few individuals blessed with the grace of God to be a part of the Nasón Chamorran and other organizations in the community advocating for the rights of our grassroots, who have sacrificed and fought for the implementation and other amendments of the Chamorlan Trust Act. Bill 3238 has been introduced to authorize to transfer a portion of lot 5173 in Tamuning from the Chamorlan Trust Commission. The grantor that sold the property on October 29, 1951 for $51,914.99, as documented and recorded in the Department of Land Management Instrument Number 23817. Seventy-four years ago, Bill 3238 justifies transferring the land to the grantor and heirs, as stated by the bill, by stating that the government of Guam may not be the best steward of this property as lands continue to languish while in its inventory. As a former commissioner of the Chamorlan Trust Commission during the past three years, I can respectfully say, prior to my departure, the CLTC team collectively resumed awarding leases to applicants who had been waiting in line for the past 30 years. This was made possible by the diligent work that were produced by the honorable senators of the 37 Guam Legislature under the leadership of Speaker Attorney Theresa Lahi and supported by the Appropriations Committee Chairman Senator Jose Augustine. Kudos and biba to the 37 for introducing the seven key bills that were the primary components that today, in 2025, allows the CLTC to legally move forward and start ratifying 99-year leases over a decade of legal challenges that were triggered by the Barrigada Heights fiasco. However, the situation also reflects on the quality and effectiveness of the prior appointments of acting administrative directors over the past 20 years, which had a turnover rate of about one appointed director every two years. There was no continuity resulting in low employee morale, low productivity, and exploitation of the CLTC system. About Bill 3228, it is important to clarify that the original registered landowner of this property, based on the records of the Spanish record logbook, was Mr. Lorenzo Manalisa Leon Guerrero, that was recorded back in 1929, while the grantor recorded in October 29, 1951, is documented as the previous landowner. Furthermore, the bill outlines how property is acquired by the government of Guam, yet it neglects to specify how the property in question was obtained. The registered original landowner, señor Lorenzo Manilisai Guerrero, sold lot 5173 to Atkins Crowell &amp; Company for $3,700, after which Atkins Crowell &amp; Company sold the property to señor Tun Francisco Duena Perez for $555. Subsequently, a portion of lot 5173 was sold to the government of Guam for $51,914.99, after which the government transferred administrative jurisdiction to the Chamorlan Trust Commission. The bill intends to transfer the property to the heirs of the grantor because, quote the bill stated, that because the government of Guam allegedly does not know what to do with the property and has no use for it. However, I must remind the committee that the land leasing programs of the Chamorlan Trust Commission are meant to address the unjust taking of the property by the United States government. Removing this property from the CLTC would deny several hundred families of the opportunity to have homes with full infrastructure already installed or deny about 30,000 individuals of our grassroots a funding source to pay for the installation of infrastructure on their leased properties. In closing, I respectfully oppose Bill 3238 because it omits relevant factual informations. I firmly believe that if the October 29, 1951 contract was breached by the government, the case should have been addressed in a court of law before the six-year statute of limitation expired and not in the Guam Legislature or in Adaluc. Additionally, how is it that there is no protest to return the parcels that the Naftan Manenata and the Sagan Kutturan Chamorran is located on? We must end the practice of treating the CLTC inventory like a slush fund or want our magahaga for the Nasón Chamorran señora de bikinata categorized as the legislature's piggy bank, as noted during our first public hearing in March of 2025. Donkulu na sítuus maasi.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera, for your testimony. Sir, you'll be providing testimony? Oral testimony? Will you be providing testimony?
Yes.
Yes, have a seat, and you can provide your testimony. Just state your name for the record. Senator, you can go ahead and...
Hafa de members of the Committee on Rules and Vice Speaker Ada, Senators Do ñas, Telaya, and Barnett, maniluhu dan manenahu. My name is Mary Camacho Torres, and I was a former senator in the 33rd, 36 Guam Legislature, and I am a relative of the Francisco D. Perez family. My mother, Lourdes Perez Camacho, is the lone surviving sibling of Mr. Perez, and our family homes are located near to each other. I appear today in favor of the intent of Bill number 32-38-COR. This bill will undoubtedly spark a mix of emotions and debate about what is ethical, what is just, and what is in the best interest of the greater public good. What I hope will come out of this entire process is a better understanding of the history of the land transaction, a desire to honor the good faith intentions of Frank Perez and Governor Skinner in the first place, and a solution to put closure to a claim of interest by the Perez family. It's extraordinary by today's standards to conceive of such a land transaction. Imagine the principle behind giving up a large tract of land, over 42 acres, at below value for the sake of a civilian hospital. And an additional acreage was also given by Mr. Perez for the road and easement, and it was gifted, I believe. This was post-World War II, my mother Lourdes would explain, when our people were looking to rise from the ashes, almost literally. I deduced from the recounts of bygone days from my mother that Uncle Frank was an exemplary leader. He was at the forefront of helping to rebuild Guam, an island that he and many envisioned would be sustained by an empowered community, a strong church, and a budding economy. He was generous, my mom would tell me, but strict. And as the older brother, he was like a father figure, not only to his immediate family but to his extended family. He prioritized higher education and ensured that his siblings completed their chores. Most importantly, they completed it correctly. When this bill was first introduced, I was worried about the potential political tussle between the proponents of a new hospital at Oka Point and the defenders of the CLTC, and how that would affect the family's focus on continuing their father's journey to justice. And that's why I'm here today, to support my family. Testimony that was offered by John and others, Mr. Cameron, show that the discussion of the failure to compensate has been open for decades. The greater public good of a civilian hospital is indisputable, and in 1951, it was novel, much so that both my parents started out in the medical profession. My mother, I recall, walked to and from GMH every single day where she worked in the laboratory, at a point to when they were doing cancer research, you know, really helping our local people for the first time. But the old GMH hospital has been demolished for nearly 30 years, and the site is now used primarily for a staging ground for green waste, and who knows what else happens behind the confines of the jungle. One can argue that the greater public benefit, as specifically intended in 1951, has not been applicable for an unreasonably long time, at least 30 years since that hospital's been gone. Close to 20 years ago, another legislative body debated this issue of just compensation in the form of Bill 625-23, as John mentioned in his chronology, which passed but was ultimately vetoed by the acting governor at the time. But as I thought about that, it was serendipitous, serendipitously authored by a senator whose advocacy for our Chamorro people is legendary, Senator Angel Santos. I want to remind the body that it's been 70 years since the recording of a deed transferring a portion of lot number 5173 from Francisco D. Perez to the government of Guam. I suggest that the restitution of the real estate by the government of Guam is in order. We can honor the good faith intention of an upright Chamorro, a Chamorro man who agreed to give up prime property to the first civilian governor so our people can have the dignity of modern medical care. Mr. Perez, our Uncle Frank, was not made whole. This has been repeated by his sister. She remembers firsthand. And many of us feel that the government took advantage of Uncle Frank's humility and his civility over the past 70 years by not properly compensating him and further by not using the acquired property for its intended purposes for the past 30 years. Senators, it's a good time. It's a good time to do justice to the leaders of our greatest generation. We're coming upon July, the one month that we highlight our greatest generation, their sacrifices and their contributions. But it's a good time now, especially when there are still a few around who can witness your good actions. And with that, I express sinceramente and my desire that you should, once and for all, put this to bed while there are still some of us who were there, some of us meeting our people, who were there and can see some segments of justice finally come to fruition. Sítuus maasi.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Benevente, you'll be providing your testimony? Turn on your microphone.
Manana sítuus samzu, na senador dan speaker, Vice Speaker. You know, freely, I will talk in both languages so everybody could understand. I was part of the Chamorran Nation, and we were put down, laid down by our own people until it passed. That's when everybody got to understand the Chamorran Nation's plight. That's when everybody got to understand the Chamorro Nation's plight and so forth down the line, for the people, for the people. Not just political agendas, not family agendas, and so forth down the line. It is for the people. Like President Trump, America comes first. My version is Guam comes first, not political. Now, the Chamorro Land Trust, I... Correct me if I'm wrong, it's under the Chamorro Land Trust listing. And right there and then, there's a lot of people has signed up for the Chamorro Land Trust in the beginning. There were seven deaths already up to now that they haven't received. And this shortcut, bullies comes further, political comes further, and so forth down the line, that's not right for a member of the Chamorro Nation to see that thing happen. Injustice is what, you know, I'm looking at. And I have to, you know, all of you, I know them personally. Do what's right. You know, our family owns the runway, part of the runway in Tizen. What happened to that? The legislature, like the Chamorro Land Trust said, they have the funds to pay off the claims. But they turned around and told me that it was up to the governor and to the legislature. What happened to that? But this issue came up. Automatically, one person is interested. We are interested, we, the people of Guam, are interested in justice. My goodness, I ran for senator. I was number sixteen. Lucky thing, I didn't win for senator. So I'll be there for the people. Injustices is wrong. We put our kids in school for the truth and when they came out to reality, they tell them, hey, don't do that, don't say that. And then the kid will say, oh, that's wrong. Well, this is the way it is in life. Is that right? No. You know, in your hearts, senators and Vice Speaker, in your heart, put this equally inside for the people, not for one agenda, for one person's interest. I have an interest in my island. As far as I know, if nobody claims this island, I claim this island, my own. Not as an individual like some people today. But they talk about reality. This is reality I'm talking about. And I look at you guys together. Interests, political interests, it's got to get out from political because it's the people's interest first. That's my agenda, that's my heart. I'm compassionate with my people, my land. Really, we got to get together here for one individual to claim back what is he or they sold. And we didn't sell our land in Tizen. Remember that, senators, remember that. And now there's still no compensation. It's so embarrassing that, you know, we went to school to learn the right thing, went to high school, we went to college, and doing the wrong thing, you know it's wrong. Do it together as one. Do it for Tizen also. Do it for Kathy McCollum's land down there at Runon. Do it for the Ateru. Do it for our people, not for just one agenda. The Perez too is part of my family. And if far-distance family, but still my family, whether I disagree with it or not. And this is coming from my heart. And, you know, I hope you guys realize what I'm trying to say. It is for all the people of Guam that deserve compensation, all the people of Guam, not just one. Because I'll be on top of you guys in parties and in campaign. Believe me. I'm retired already, so nobody pays me what to say up here. God bless it. God bless Guam. Sisu Masi.
Thank you, Mr. Beneventi, for your testimony. We'll go ahead and open up the... Sure, Mr. Celestio.
Buenas noches, Vice Speaker Ada, Senators. Enonnu, si Robert Namoluk, Celestio. I don't have no dog in the fight. I just want to testify from my heart. I want to defend the Chamorro Land Trust because it's a program for the people that don't have property and there's a whole bunch of them on the list. Growing up, I've always heard about the Oka Point being... Which donated for many, many years, growing up, that it was donated for a hospital. And that was the main reason that, I believe, for many, many years, our government and people really wanted to see a hospital there in Oka Point, even myself. And then all of a sudden, I find these documents stating that the land was sold to government of Guam for fifty-one thousand and so much, you know, so much more. So I got interested to find out that how can you give back property that was sold? So more information came in, you know, and then I read... I'm not read, but I heard the testimony of Mr. Perez saying that there was a promise that was reneged. But it was reneged by the federal government. And that promise wasn't in the contract when Mr. Perez sold the land to government of Guam. So there's certain issues here that either has to go to the ancestral lands or to the AG. If you're going to pass this, then it makes a lot of sense for all these folks, people from Tizen, Rattidian, Kathy McCollum. All these properties need to be addressed. You can't have an issue like this and not say it's not favoritism because, you know, it really looks like it. I have nothing against the Perez family. I don't even know them. But I do know that the Chamorro Land Trust owns the property for the government and that property should go to the people on the list. And so that's why I'm testifying today. Because if those documents are not true, then yes, they have an issue, the Perrises have a claim. But what I've read is that nothing in the contract that Mr. Perez sold the property to government of Guam, even though it was promised from Mr. Guerrero, Mr. Bolbrook, and said, "We're going to give you all these equipment, you know, from Saipan to New York back to Guam." The equipment came to Guam, yes. However, when the higher echelon decided, "No, we're not going to do that", and then find out that Mr. Perez sold the property, then that promise was reneged. But it wasn't the government of Guam nor Mr. Perez, according to what the document I read from Captain Skinner. So me as an individual living on Guam, you know, there's other issues that are not addressed today. Why all of a sudden do you want to give Oka Point up? Is it because of an issue that you want to build a hospital over in Mangillo? That if this issue is gone, the governor will have, you know, the opportunity to build a hospital in Mangillo because now the issue of Oka Point has disappeared? This is a real big issue for me. When I sit back at home and I watch all the political moves that's going on, it's like a chessboard. Who are the pawns? We are the pawns. But a pawn, sometimes when you get to the top, becomes a queen. So that's my analogy, is that I really respect people to get their property back, but do it in a way where it's equitable for everybody, not for just one. And I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but if I sold my property to the government and then many, many years later, my grandchildren come and say, hey, I want my grandfather's property because, you know, there was a promise, but it wasn't in the contract. That's what we're doing here today. And so I hope and pray that you senators make a decision when you come to vote, you know, either amend it or like Sabrina Salas, just throw it away. You know, because it's the right thing to do. The entire island is watching you guys, you know? And whoever's running for higher office, people are watching this. The voters are watching this. I'm watching it. It's because there's more families who need property and the Chamorro Land Trust is there for them. And so I hope and pray that being not inside or within Chamorro Land Trust, I'm just an individual that really would like to see what is right done, you know, because a lot of issues are not brought up here, the political issues, you know? I mean, I'd like to see a hospital. It said that this was given for the people of Guam to build a hospital. Why haven't they built a hospital at Oka Point? They have the money today. Why don't they start it up? Why build a hospital in Mangillo when there's so much controversy? I don't understand that part. Our people are suffering, even with my issue with the downwinders. Our people are suffering. They're dying. They can't come up here at eight-thirty in the morning. You know, I want to thank Senator Duñez because he has, you know, when he has a public hearing, he's scheduled a public hearing, he has it from four o'clock to eight o'clock, where people is available to come to this floor and testify. A lot of people can't come at eight-thirty in the morning because they're at work, they're at school. They want to testify, but they can't. And then the excuse is they could write their own, you know, testimony. A lot of people won't do that. But I want to thank... I want to thank the Lord because he's given me enough strength to come here because, you know, if you're not Chamorone, going to break, you're zima, so I knew, you're zia, I'm cool, I'm... You know, it's not your problem. But it is our problem because it's a promise that was given to build a hospital over there. And then now I see in the outside that there's a manipulation where you get rid of this land so you could have more weight to build a hospital in Mangillo, which is wrong, you know? I mean, seeing it from my eyes. And not only that, you're taking property from Chamorro Land Trust that other people deserve it. Nothing against the Perrises family. It's just that what I read is just, you know, evidence, it's facts. He sold it. It belongs to the government of Guam, to my understanding. Sisu Masi.
Thank you, Mr. Celestio, for your testimony. I'll go ahead and open up the panel to my colleagues here and I'll start off with the vice chair, Senator Duñez.
Sisu Masi, Vice Speaker Ada. And so it's, as always, and even in the prior hearing, I disclosed that I'm related to the Perez family. So I'll go more extensive on that disclosure. In the thirty-seventh Guam Legislature, I listened to deliberations, not only in public hearing but on the floor, for the compensation for Luis Duñez, who is my first cousin, that legislation that was introduced and sponsored by Senator Kenata and also carried forward by the former speaker, Terlahi. And I rose on the floor to recuse myself from voting. However, I participated in the process as a senator because that is our job. I'm doing the same thing today. Like I said, Luis Duñez, Luis's father was my father's, both late, father's brother, Ricardo Camacho Duñez. In this instance, I am the first cousin of the Perez family as well. My father, Ricardo Camacho Duñez, is the brother of Carmen Camacho Perez. And so that, of course, makes us first cousin, married Uncle Frank as well. Now, the reason why I put all that out there is to further go forward and say that I voted in favor of the bill that contemplated the hospital in Ipau Point. The Perez family, as they put on the record, always honored the wishes of their father, the late, and I will say, great Francisco Perez, because that was the intention of the property. This bill is introduced as Bill thirty-two thirty-eight COR by the Committee on Rules by request of Imaga Hagan Guahan, the governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. There are no senators right now that are sponsors of this bill. This bill is being handled by the Committee on Rules as submitted to the legislature by the governor of Guam. So I will continue to listen to deliberations, as is my job as a senator, and listen to the back and forth. And then I will go forward, should this bill reach the floor, and ask the body, what should my position be in terms of voting or not voting on the bill? I will comment that, you know, I think the Perez family has put a very compelling testimony forward and there are other compelling testimonies that have been provided today in terms of how to treat this entire situation as a corpus. I will also disclose that I am the son of Jose... I mean, the grandson of Jose Castro Duñez. So I share with Mr. Beneventi the situation of the Tizen property. We all do. Even the Perez family has that same situation whereby there's large parcels of land that are not returnable to the family for the airport deemed because of the contiguous property to the runway and, of course, what aircraft required to have in terms of clearances. So we also have sat by while other properties have been returned to families, but we are in the same boat with you, Sinoet Beneventi, that we are part of the displaced individuals who are not eligible for the return of properties of in Tizen. So that's my full disclosure. And like I said, but I believe it is still my duty and my responsibility, particularly as the vice chair of this committee, to listen to the disposition and then leave it to the body in terms of what my final outcome will be in terms of deliberations on this legislation. I will mention as well, as other testimonies have come forward, other senators have had this situation, not just with the Perez family, but with other familial situations whereby legislation of interest, whether it be property or monetary compensation, are contemplated. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I join you as your vice chair to once again do my duty to listen to public hearings and deliberation on this matter. Sisu Masi, para Hamza Taurus.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Senator Terlahi, you're recognized, madam.
Sisu Masi, thank you all for your testimony and I appreciate the situation that we are in very much. It's... I tend to agree that while we are... There may be justice that we need to resolve for one family. There is so many other issues that we need to resolve relative to land to bring justice. And I don't want to create an injustice by seemingly, you know, fulfilling something else. So, but I do believe that the situation can be resolved. I think so. I think if there was any other transaction with the government, the government failed to do something, then they should be made to do something, right? And in this case, I mean, so that's why I have some questions. But I also note that, for example, when the ancestral lands or the legislature tried to remedy the Tizen properties by giving other properties, right, as compensation, they were prohibited from doing that because that was a breach of the trust. And this is very important to me. It's like we've created by law beneficiaries that we are supposed to act on their behalf and because of great injustice, massive land takings by the federal government, involuntary. That's a big difference for me, involuntary land takings. They were... But the court prohibited the legislature from directly compensating, for example, the Tizen landowners, saying that was a... for example, the Tizen landowners, saying that was very much a breach of fiduciary duty to the beneficiaries. And I know, Mr. Herrera, you brought that up in your testimony in March. Sí, Jesús Masí. And I have reviewed all the testimony from March also. For the record, there was other testimony as well. I also think, you know, we have classes of people now on Guam that are, that have claims for justice. We have those in the ancestral lands, whose land has been returned to the government of Guam. And we're supposed to either give them back their land or compensate them. And we have not compensated those whose lands we have kept, not just for the runway, but for the brand-new airport expansion, industrial park that they want to lease out to investors, all those properties. We didn't return. We kept. And we've put a promise to the landowners to compensate them later for keeping those properties. The Tomorrowland Trust was very, it was recognized just a few years ago in district court to be a justice law that is supposed to right the injustices of federal land takings. Again, massive land takings. We could not probably, even with the large inventory in the Tomorrowland Trust, take care of all the families whose lands were taken, especially if we're talking about descendants, which the bill, the law does and the court recognize. So, and then we had another bill recently regarding one property whose the landowners did not pay the property tax. So they lost that property again to the Navy government and want the land returned now from the government of Guam. That land's also in the Tomorrowland Trust, I believe, or it's not clear, I can't remember. But those are things I just feel like, so these new classes of people, if we're going to open that up, I agree with Senator, former Senator Lamorena. This is, if we want to bring justice, then we might need to look at, how are we going to do this for everyone? Who feels like when they sold their property to the government of Guam, the government of Guam did not meet their obligation? Or when they failed to pay the land taxes to the Navy government, that was an unjust taking by the Navy government? That's not who we have recognized so far. We've recognized those whose lands were involuntarily taken by the Navy government in condemnation proceedings. So it's, I just, so I just think, yes, we need to, as the former senator said, there's restitution perhaps, right? That needs to be made. The property, I believe, up until even recently, has been thought to be used for a hospital. Even in 2010, there was plans, there was a study done by the Navy as to it's going to be used for the hospital because they knew they needed to help us build a hospital. Back then, they did a study so that they would begin with an internal child health unit and then they would bring the rest of them, unit by unit, so we wouldn't interfere with the current hospital. So I do appreciate that. And I just, I'm also thinking, we're also, the government of Guam is currently in the middle of condemning property involuntarily in some other village, while we are saying we're not going, I don't, I don't know, it just, we're not going to take care of those whose property was condemned. They're condemning property against the will of the landowners. And we are going to, by this bill, return property that was sold to the government of Guam. I, so I, I do believe there's justice to be made, but I just don't think it's equivalent that we're going to say, I just, and I support that we're going to give restitution to the Perez family, but I just don't like when they try to, not you, but when political people try to equate that land takings by the federal government involuntarily after the war by the Navy is the same thing that we're talking about today. I think we need to continue to make sure we don't violate that trust that we have created for beneficiaries and that we honor the intentions of that trust. And we've really created an injustice on top of an injustice by the delay. And Senator Lamorena was correct. When the property was proposed to be leased back then, there was actually RFPs that went out for that. So I don't think it was the CLTC's delay. I think it was the governor at the time did not want to go forward with any of those RFPs. And GIDEA was supposed to, you know, continue to help to develop that property, financing, all of it. That just, there are some other issues involved. But we need to continue to advocate for the return of the land. For example, Ms. McCollum's property, absolutely. And there is a process that we're supposed to be doing that. I haven't seen any movement on that process since maybe 2019, 2020. It's a process set up by the Congress for, and our governors are supposed to be making requests. So when they put out the RFP, that was as recent as 2017, when CLTC again put it on the list of, for lease, right? All right. So my questions are, when, when the claim was filed, the first claim that you can recall, Mr. Perez, was filed, is there any monetary amount that has ever been discussed as to the value of the construction equipment that was not fulfilled by the government at the time? And I know those values would be different based on today's values, but...
It's my understanding, excuse me, it's my understanding that there was a list of equipment and my dad had delineated on his transaction on papers, the types of equipment. They were all off-the-road heavy equipment that were at the high end of pricing for the day. As to the valuation of that, I don't recall.
All right. Do you know, perhaps, the types and number of equipment that we were considering?
Yeah, we're talking dozers, graders, those types of things.
So there's like a list that exists?
Yeah, there are million-dollar, two-million-dollar items these days.
Okay. All right. And do you, some, there was some testimony that says, I think it was Senator Torres that said, the property was sold for below value. Are there any, do you have any records or anything that indicates what the value was?
As I understand it, on the deed of transfer, it was valued at, not valued, it was sold at 30 per square meter, 30 cents per square meter. As to valuation in those days, I'm not familiar with how that worked.
I'm not sure either, but I'm wondering if land management could help us to determine that or something? If there were comparable properties? I don't, honestly, I don't know of any sales back then, except this one, because I'm not familiar. 1951, yeah. So, but I would be interested to see if we could figure that out somehow. And do you, when you, I've been, wait. So I've been looking for that bill that you talked about, that was sponsored in the 23rd Guam Legislature and passed and then vetoed by the acting governor, but I can't find it yet. Do you have the veto message on hand? Are you able to read the veto message for us?
The veto message? No, I do not.
Okay. I'm, I want to know what that veto was about as well. All right. Do you know, when they were in that bill contemplating return of one-third of the property, I looked at values, that was in the 23rd, so that was way back in, I don't know the year. Do you remember the year? Oh, I think you have it in your testimony. 30 years? 30 years ago? 1995, Senator Adesey, Vice Speaker? Is that somewhere around there? That might be right. Yeah, I'm sure, I don't know, I'm going to look at that bill, see if they have some valuation in there as well. And the one-third of the property. So part of the property that we're talking about now, and according to the bill, we're not going to return the portion that's reserved for the Naftan Manioneta Shrine. We're not going to return the portion that's being used at the Tomorrow Cultural Center. I, and so I just want to calculate what's, what, what portion of the property are we returning? Is it, is it equivalent to one-third or more?
Reference to 3238, the bill specifies the two specific lot numbers that were to be returned. They are both unused properties of the Oak Point area. As to valuation, Senator, those things are basically perspective. If you looked at my dad's intent with Manny Guerrero and Governor Colton Skinner, they were looking at a place to build a hospital to meet or exceed the amenities and the ideals that the US Navy Hospital was being built upon. And so they found this particular land to be attractive to them. And obviously, they assigned certain values to it. And no question, we could have pushed for a different price. My dad found value in the use of equipment that was to be disposed of by the military.
Yeah, all right. And the earliest, yeah, I'm just trying to get to some kind of formulation here. The earliest claim that was filed, I don't see any value on it as well. Like normally, we put claims, we put a value as to some, like contractors put claims on properties because there's a certain amount. But the claim that's circulating here, there is no value on it. Are you aware of any prior claims that were filed with, with any value? And this was filed by Frank Jr. Is that, that's not your dad, or is that your dad?
Frank D. Perez Jr. is my brother.
Your brother, okay. Just want to make sure. So are you aware of any claims that were filed by your dad?
I don't recall. I, it's been a while. I have not read that claim of interest in many, many years, nor have I read the claim of interest of my brother Gregory as well.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, thank you. And again, thank you to all the family who are here. And I do recognize that it, it, you, in all your discussions over the past years, have been always in support of a hospital continuing to be built and that the property be used for a hospital. And I'm very grateful for that. I believe that's very, did you want to answer?
If I may, Senator, the efforts that we have been putting forward for our claim on Oak Point go back to the middle 70s. This is not new to us. And we have never claimed other than to look at what we could do to remedy the situation. We've been working through many legislatures, through several governors. And even with the current governor, we approached her prior to the Manila site being a considered hospital site.
All right. Thank you. Yes, please state your name for the record.
Buenas, my name's Margarita Perez Leon Guerrero. I just wanted to mention that it was our father that Frank D. Perez that actually filed the first claim in 1996 after the Senator Angel Santos's bill.
After that, okay.
Right. And then also, our dad actually wrote on, in his handwriting, on the deed that we have, it says there were 61 pieces of construction equipment. And that's all I wanted to share.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. If we could get a copy of that part, maybe we've got a copy somewhere in our records, but that would be great. Sí, Jesús Masí. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. I appreciate you. Senator Barnett, you're recognized, sir.
Madam Sí, Jesús, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak. And thank you for the testimony from the panel. And thank you, Mr. Perez, for your testimony as well. And also for your family's generosity in allowing this parcel of land to be used to construct the old Guam Memorial Hospital. And I remember we met in the last term, and this, I believe this, you're right, it was prior to the selection of Manila. And I think the gist of the meeting, from what I can remember, was, why aren't we using the property up in Ipau Point to construct the new hospital? And as everyone's aware, I've been one of the senators grateful for the support of my colleagues who did support that, to push for the construction of the hospital at Ipau Point, which I still believe makes sense. I just don't know how we're going to be able to afford the billion-dollar healthcare project. And frankly, I anticipated I'd have support for the effort to build it to mooning in this 38th Guam Legislature. But just looking at the lay of the land and, you know, taking into account the politics, not on your part, sir, but I definitely think that there's some big-time politics at play here. I think it was Mr. Celestial who talked about chessboard. And I think in some ways, this bill is the nuclear option of taking this property off of the People of Guam's chessboard. Because with all due respect, and I said this is the first hearing, I don't think that this is our property to give away. I think this is the People of Guam's property. And I only say that because in some of the testimony provided and the documents that I've been able to review, there was an exchange of money, even though the construction part was never fulfilled. And then, and just calculating how much was $51,000 worth in 1951? And I also wonder, it's hard to do research on a lot of these old land transactions. This could have been like one of the biggest land transactions ever conducted, I wonder, in the history of government of Guam. But that, that value in today's money is well over half a million dollars, so. And I too, I was, I grew up believing that the Perez family donated the property. And it doesn't change, you know, what I feel about the family's generosity in providing that significant piece of property. But I do also, with all due respect, kind of take offense, and this is where the politics comes in, when we have people like the People of Guam who have had their land unjustly taken, people like my grandmother, whose land up in Radio Baragato was, was taken away. That was the only land that we had in the family. To this day in 2025, we don't have any land, you know? And so to compare situations like that to situations like a parcel of property that was willingly sold, for me, it's, I don't want to say offensive, but it is a little bit of apples and oranges. And so I was really anticipating new information in this hearing. And, you know, we've been in receipt of a lot of these documents and looking over. And it kind of seems like the sticking point is that your late father didn't receive the construction equipment. But I just, while I agree there, there might be an opportunity for compensation there, I don't think that that justifies taking this land out of the CLTC inventory. Because again, I believe it's the People of Guam's land. But 61 pieces of construction equipment, and you have no idea how much that would be? 96 pieces of construction equipment?
I'm sorry, one more time, Senator.
So the, was that, ma'am, Mr. Guerrero?
I'm sorry, it's 61 pieces of construction equipment.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know why we don't have a bill in front of us to give the Perez family 61 pieces of construction equipment. Because that, for me, that would make us empas, you know? Like, okay, the government of Guam made a commitment to you. I'm not even sure you need 61 pieces of construction equipment right now with the Perez brothers, right? Which is also a little ironic to me. But really, outside of any new information, I think that Mr. Herrera's testimony was right, that the bill leaves out key facts that are relevant to this, like the original registered landowner, Mr. Lorenzo Manalisa Leon Guerrero. I mean, what if descendants of Mr. Leon Guerrero came forward and said that Atkins scroll didn't fulfill part of the sale of that property? Would we then be entertaining that? And it's really unfortunate because, again, I respectfully, I respect the Perez family, but I just feel like we're setting a very dangerous precedent. And in lieu of any new information that, for me, signifies a smoking gun that would, you know, kind of say, hey, know, kind of say, hey, that property was unjustly taken, or the compensation wasn't there, because again, you know, it's just a tough, it's a tough situation, but you know, that, that's the crown jewel of the Chamor Land Trust Commission, and, and this property has the potential to generate revenue. I mean, this is the number one problem on Guam. We're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about our people leaving island, and this property generates, could generate potentially, you know, millions of dollars that would go to putting infrastructure on these, these, these Chamor Land Trust lots. So again, I, with all due respect, I cannot support the bill as it's written, unless there's some type of new information that comes out. I think we're treading down a, a dangerous road, because there are many people on our island who have been, who have had their lands taken. And we all know this, and we're not entertaining bills to return their land or to compensate them or, or anything like that. And so thank you, Mr. Chair, for, for the opportunity to speak again on the bill. And I look forward to any other testimony that, that could be provided to the committee. As a member of the committee, I am, I have looked up and down in all kinds of places. I've read Mr. Skinner's affidavit, but I just don't think that not receiving the construction company, especially with the exchange of money, which is where, you know, the, the title that GovGuam holds on this land, it's free and clear. I mean, it's the highest type of title that the People of Guam can have. And so in saying that, I'm not saying you don't have a case, I'm just saying, okay, if it was about the construction equipment, then there, maybe there's some way that you can be made whole on that end. But I don't believe that giving away the, the people's land, which was, you know, sold to our people by your father is the remedy for that lack of compensation. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. And I'd like to thank all the individuals here who have come to testify. And just like with any other piece of legislation that goes through the process, any bills that come to my committee, I, I have an obligation to hear them. In support or in opposition, that's not, that's not my, my call. My call is when it's referred to my committee, I have to do my due diligence and to ensure that public hearing is, is held for the bills, and then we can determine whether, what all those that have come in favor or opposition to, and then do a committee markup should the bill proceed to move to the session floor, where it's voted by all 15 members of the body. With that being said, just like every other bill before this bill, I've, I've done that due process. The, this bill was submitted to the legislature by the Governor of Guam, by her authority of the Organic Act, and I did have a first public hearing, and this is a second public hearing, so that we can continue to receive information on this. I know this hasn't been the, the first issue of it, and I know that the, the chairwoman, the Committee on Lands previously too, has had bills in her committee too that as well that, you know, she had to have public hearings for. And we will continue to, to hear these testimonies, and we'll continue, I'll continue to keep the record open for anyone else who would like to submit written testimonies as well in favor or in opposition to, to this bill. And with that being said, the committee, as I said, will continue to accept statements on today's hearing, which may be mailed to my office on the second floor of the Guam Congress Building at 163 Chalancalto Papa Enagana. You may also send me your statements to us at Vice Speaker Tonyada at guamlegislature.gov. Thank you all for your participation, and this public hearing is adjourned, and the time is now 10:23 a.m. Thank you all very much for your participation.